So, uh, let's call the meeting to a word and welcome everyone here. I guess Amanda will be here in a little bit. This is a work session for the ESAC Community Schools Board of Directors, and we're gonna talk about facilities and operational costs. And we really don't have an agenda for this tonight, so I think the way we should start maybe is get some scenarios out there of what kinda information we wanna look at. I think, I mean, we've talked about this several times, and I think what we need to do is, to keep moving forward, we need to, obviously, figure out where we can save money and how we can do that, and if we can do that. So, I would turn it over to any board member who has, uh, any kind of questions. Jay, I know you've got some questions. I don't know if you wanna start, if you want me to start?
I don't care.
One of the-
They want to spend days.
One-
Well, now, don't come into it.
When you're looking at us here.
Yeah. That was a brutal one.
We just started.
We just-
We just started, Amanda, so you didn't miss anything. I think one of the things that we need to look at is, I mean, obviously, if you talk about closing a building, you wanna make sure that you are gonna save money by doing it. So, I think one of the things that we need to look at is, is first of all, if we close the Wall Lake building, what kinda savings is there gonna be? And I think John, you and Dr. Feeney are the two who are gonna have to come up with what the savings are, 'cause you guys understand, first of all, how we're gonna be able to move the kids. Second of all, what it's gonna take to get the kids from the Wall Lake, Lakeview area to wherever they're gonna go, if it's to this building or to another building. So, that'd be the first scenario that I think we need to look at. The second scenario would be to look at, you know, what would be the cost savings if we were to close down the middle school and have an elementary school in SAC and in Wall Lake? And what those cost savings could be? 'Cause there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some moving around the kids there also. Anybody got anything to add to that?
I don't. Do you think it would be easier for you, Dr. Feeney, you, John, for us to give you scenarios of what we think, or?
I would say yes, 'cause what we would do, and John jumped in and he disagreed, but what we would do is create some kind of template that makes sure that you're getting the same, comparing apples to apples in each of the scenarios. For instance, the transportation costs, if you think this figure is gonna be the same in all of the scenarios, so that it's the best, the best that we can do. So, knowing what the different scenarios are would be very helpful.
And you wanna try to do this with the data that we already have, correct?
Mm-hmm. And if there are other pieces of data, this would be the next piece in the evolution of data, I guess, in this process. The kids, huh?
Couple.
All right, those are good songs.
One other thing that I thought about today was, you know, if you do, if you do close down a building, like the Wall Lake Elementary or the SAC Middle School, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of kids in both buildings. Where do we put them? And do we have the space to put them in an existing building? And if we don't, what does it cost to get us to that space?
I think that's a, that's a really good point, Chris. And, um, and I think the board probably understands this. I'm not sure yet about the public, but there's really two, two things that have, in my opinion, that have to happen in a kind of parallel, is what we're talking about. One is what's the operational cost? That's savings in general, right? That's salaries, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then, also, what we can do is work on a projection of what would you have to do in this scenario to make this happen? Such as, if there was one elementary school that was located in this building, is there space, kinda like what Chris is talking about? But that isn't a general fund. That would be expenditures from the pebble or the save accounts. Okay? So, when we talk, you know, so they have to run parallel. But we have to make sure that we distinguish an operational cost savings is really geared towards general fund. There will have to be, in my opinion, some expenditures out of pebble and save to make any of the scenarios happen. You know, to upgrade the facilities. And so, that's kinda how those two things have to run parallel, in my opinion.
There are so many different scenarios. Do we, as a group, try to come up with, like, the top, I mean, what, you know what I mean?
I think we need to throw 'em all out and see what the cost is, what the cost savings are. I know that's a lot of work for somebody, but I think we need to start there and look at what impact it will have on children.
And I think that's a good point, Jay, because ultimately, what we wanna do is we wanna take all the emotion out of it, as much as we can, and let the numbers drive what we're doing. So, I think that's a really good one.
It doesn't make a lot of sense to close the Wall Lake building if you're gonna have as much in transportation to move wherever, as you wouldn't say to the kids. Yes, exactly.
But then the flip side of that, no matter where we're talking buildings here, is if it, if you're gonna, leaving finance aside, what does it do, again, for the kids to all be together? I mean, you know, if we're talking about what's best for the kids, so.
That one's hard to quantify. Yeah, but it needs to be part of the discussion.
Right, because, I mean, I, obviously, we're talking about this to reduce operational costs. But with our mission statement being what it is, we wanna do our best to really do what's best for the kids, wherever that may be, or however that may be.
You know, I don't really wanna throw a wrench into what we've talked about so far, but in the back of our packet for our regular board meeting, there's the quote, not quote, but the testament for the new building. And so, one of the things that I did in looking at this is, is forty million dollars in a bond? Is that even feasible for our district? So, just putting some numbers to it, it's about two point six million dollars per year if you have a twenty-year bond for forty million dollars. That's our payment. If we, if we were to tax everybody in our district for that, that would be seven dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand. That's-
Above, above what?
Above what we're doing now. That's a ridiculous amount of money.
Well, and if I could throw something in there, too, is by law, the biggest bond issue, and it takes two different votes, is four dollars and five cents.
Okay, so that's-
That's the most money that this district can generate. There'd be a bond issue for two dollars and seventy cents, and then a second question for the difference between two seventy and four oh five. You can't generate enough money from bonding to do this.
So, that's completely out the window. I mean, we, we just don't have the, we don't have the tax base to do that. One thing that I talked to a guy about a couple of weeks ago was farm ground. And I know farmers aren't gonna wanna hear this, but if we put a, if we put a fifty cent per thousand tax on a, on a assessed value, and not even an assessed value, because the assessed value of farm ground is nothing compared to what it's selling for. But if you put fifty cents per thousand on what it's actually worth, you could raise about seven hundred thousand dollars a year, roughly. And I, and I don't know if that's something that we can do. I don't know if we can, if we can do that as a, as a school district.
I'd say you can't just pick farming, you'd have to figure your tax base. I don't think you can just take the egg, Amanda, just assess that. I don't think so.
I'm not familiar with that. But we can certainly find out more. I mean, just to, again, in the spirit of laying everything out there, options for buildings, they have three, three different sources of revenue for buildings. One is a bond issue, and that's one hundred percent property tax, and the public votes on that. The other is to use pebble or and/or save accounts, the state pin. And you can borrow against future revenue for the, for both of those accounts, from a property tax, at least. So, you don't have to bank it, you can borrow against it. Those are really your sources of revenue for any kind of new construction.
What do we bring in, John, roughly, from the save account? Every year, since they're together?
Yeah, five hundred thousand. Forty thousand a month.
And what is our, what does a pebble generate at the thirty-three, or point thirty-three cents every year there?
A hundred thousand, yeah.
The save account goes out through 2029. That's what was in the revenue purpose statement that the public approved last year.
So, even, even if you, just kinda rough figure in here, if you take before or live that we could bond for ten, five or six hundred thousand dollars a year in those two accounts, I still don't think we can get a two point six million dollar payment out of that. It's gonna be close, but not great.
John, what, how much money could be generated? Our assessed valuation is what, about three hundred and seventy?
Yeah, three sixty-five.
Do you ever think?
Yeah.
So, the most would be four dollars and five cents times.
Three hundred thousand. One point two.
Yeah, one point three, four.
Four.
So, you could generate over a twenty-year period, then twenty-five, you know, you can overtake. Again, that's assuming that the public supports that.
It has to be voter-approved.
Right, it is. And it's one hundred percent property tax. You don't have, should have been considered tax. My guess is we would have a mutiny. That's a lot of tax base to go up.
Yeah. You know, that is an option, was an option.
What you got there, Ralph, for your house?
Enough, thank me.
What other scenarios are running through your head with building configuration? Right now, we have two to research.
What do you have written down?
Uh, closing Wall Lake Elementary and housing everyone here, closing the middle school and having that house at the high school.
I guess one that runs through my mind is to do VK, whatever, TK, whatever that is, five or six, both Wall Lake and SAC City, and then do a seven, twelve, six, twelve, whatever, in Lakeview. I mean, if you do that, as a grand, you don't have your kids together as much, but you don't have as many angles. We talked, asking about the, the times they move from one building to another, how, how much that, they fall back.
Well, and you can, probably, the high school would probably, could handle seven through twelve easier without building on much.
Can both elementaries facilitate and substandard moving back to them?
That's what we would have to do.
That's a good word, because, or, I mean, I don't know.
That's something that we would have to put in this scenario to answer that.
That's not easy, though. That couldn't handle it, so.
Well, when we work on these things, what we'll include, but, you know, what we would estimate would have to be done to any of the buildings to be able to accommodate what you're asking, we'll try, we'll include that. And we'll be very upfront about how we figure that stuff.
So, you're saying K through six?
Five or six, yeah, yeah.
At each elementary?
I would think if you do that, some of your, your transportation's costs, I would think, would be down a little bit. Just because we're not moving kids this way. But I don't know if I'll run the numbers.
Yeah, that's what we'll do, is we'll provide you with the numbers.
We're probably not even out, though, because the seventh and eighth that are up here.
You know, and on that, too, so much of this all kinda goes together. But when we're talking about what to do with sections and what we're talking about, but whatever, but, having them together for a couple of years before they go off into a new building and they're around the older children, you know, how, does that matter? Does it help? Does it? You know, my kids, they would love to see kindergarten, have everybody merge and know everybody, because we are one district. They would love that. Obviously, I don't have budget to do so, you know, but as far as keeping them apart through sixth grade is a big deal. Is that something we wanna? Does that matter? Does that have any, do you know what I mean? They're coming together in seventh grade instead of in fifth grade.
I know, I look at-
At the same time, you don't want a fifth grader in the high school with twelfth graders.
I look at Kayla's class, which would've been Matt's class. I mean, what were they, juniors or seniors when they came together? Maybe freshmen. They did just fine at that time.
Yeah.
I mean, in fact, I mean, Kayla had quite a few friends.
Yeah.
From SAC City and vice versa.
I think that's one of the things that, for our purposes, let's focus initially on getting the best, the most accurate projection as far as the numbers, and then that can morph into the discussion of pros and cons educationally, 'cause, I mean, if it were a perfect world, I'd absolutely love to be in the K-12. It's so much better. But as we're discovering with the cost, we don't live in a perfect world. So, we have to make it as perfect as we can.
So, would, has anybody looked close enough at it to know whether, did we go down to two buildings, or is that too drastic we didn't talk about right now? Can two buildings facilitate, or no?
This is, this is the time that you should be talking about everything, in my opinion. Is that possible?
And let's look at a scenario to go to two buildings. I, I don't think we physically have enough room, but.
I think something would have to be added on, too.
I would agree.
And when we're talking about what would we have to work with? What's the number?
So, that comes into play with, you know, how much is it gonna cost us?
Add on a wing or something.
Right. Let's look at it from an operate, again-
That compared to the cost of keeping a whole building open. Say we add a wing on to one of the elementaries, and we shut down one elementary, and we move, I don't know. I, I, I don't know.
For it to really be accurate, we'd need to know what you, what you want as, where the building's gonna be located, 'cause that's gonna drastically impact the transportation costs so that we can compare apples to apples. So, maybe you wanna talk about that?
I really, just on the first thought, would think that once the children start driving, or they have the capability to drive, that being simply located in the Lakeview area is, I mean, and you've got people coming from all ends, and that's-
It's in the middle.
I think that that's a good thing for kids once they hit that age. And whether that would, you know, be seventh grader, they're not gonna be, but I know as a parent, I'd be more comfortable keeping, and that's what we're gonna be kind of up against, keeping our little ones closer to us, ideally. I don't know, because you've got both the elementaries on the, both at different ends. They're not.
Which, I mean, honestly, that seems logical. I mean, the older kids move easier than the, than the littler kids, you know, so is that right? I don't know, but it seems logical.
Another thing you have to factor in is bus time. I mean, either way, if you move the elementary, you can't let those little kids on, they can't be on, right? Over an hour?
Right.
An hour? So, when you're talking, you know, from the north over south.
Yep, that is true.
So, do we have any other scenarios that we kinda wanna look at? I mean, we could, we could talk about, we could talk about this kinda thing probably all night.
It's worked about four right now, is what you guys have.
I have, yep.
Two buildings.
You're the man in charge, so that's a good one.
My number three is new school at forty million after the line.
Then I have five. I'll label that with number zero.
There you go. Yeah. There you go.
And again, just if people are wondering where that number came from, just ask Modern Design, who we worked with a couple of years ago, to do his best guess. That's where that, that's coming from, an architect. Of course, the numbers aren't really exact, but it gives you a ballpark, and that's what you asked for. And he didn't charge us anything to do that, which is-
And if, if we had the capability to get to thirty-five million, then we may look into it a little further, but we don't even have the capability to get there. You know, we're, we're, I don't even know if we could get to thirty million, you know, so I think this is good enough to say that we really, that's not an option.
So, keeping emotions out of all of it, of course, because we're all gonna have to try really hard to do that. Building-wise, how, I mean, which buildings need more repair than others? Which don't, you know, where do they lie? Is there a scale, per se, as to?
I don't know that there's a magic scale, Amanda. Obviously, this is the best building, and it, you know, went through a pretty substantial facelift, probably four years ago, three years ago, something like that. So, this one's in the, in the best shape. Each of the other three buildings have some limitations. Do they function? Yeah, they function. Could we do better if we were to do some whole-scale remodeling on any of the facilities? Absolutely, we could do better.
But before we do that, I mean, 'cause, yes, we could make all of them a little bit better, we could dump some money into, how much longer are we gonna continue to do that? And at what facility, you know, when, if we could move forward on one or two, or, you know?
Right. And when we do these projections, we'll, we'll make sure that we give you a ballpark, at least the best of our ability, on what it would take to make that building not just survivable, but highly functional. I, I'm fond of the statement that I don't know that we need a Cadillac, but goodness sakes, we should certainly be thinking a good solid Chevy for all the kids. And we can, we can base some things. When we looked at the pebble two years ago, we had some concept drawings made, and had some estimates of what it would cost. We can rely on those to be in the ballpark. And not that we're promoting those ideas, but it gives us something to go on, you know?
That's, I mean, those are good points, though, Amanda.
I think some of it is, if I could take your thought a little bit further, Amanda, perhaps, maybe. You were alluding to really, it really boils down to almost a philosophical thing that this board will have to face at some point. And that is, is the condition of the building and the money that it would take to renovate, where does that, in comparison to where that building is located, dealing with transportation costs? This thing is really complicated. I mean, we've been thinking about this and working on it for, well, since I got off the, it was four years ago when I got here, it was already a topic. So, ultimately, as a board, you're going to have to weigh those things, you know, because where, you know, how important is where a building is located for transportation time when you have a district that's twenty-seven miles long? And so, people that hold the, if I irritate somebody with this comment, so be it. You know, people that just, that look, that focus this and close the oldest building, that's too simple of thinking for a good solution, in my mind. There's a lot more that goes into this, and you're on the right track, in my opinion, by asking, what are the operational cost savings to be? And then the second part is, what would it cost to update those buildings? And you've got something to go on. But just to say, and I'll use Wall Lake, just close Wall Lake Elementary, is way too simplistic of thinking. It's not as simple as what that group of people would like to make this. It's not simple work. And complicated problems do not have simple solutions.
And to take that a little bit further, I mean, what Amanda asked earlier is, you know, what building needs the most work? In this slide right here, the, the high school was originally built in nineteen sixteen. Obviously, there's been a lot of additions to it, thirty-nine, fifty-one, sixty-nine. Middle school was originally built in thirty-six. The Wall Lake Elementary was originally built in twenty-three, and then several additions to that, too. So, they're all old. They're all the same age, and they're all old, basically. So, but I would say that they're all pretty well-kept, too, you know?
Yeah, no criticism of our people, they've done a great job. That, that isn't the issue. The issue is, we have old buildings. And our people have done, I think, an amazing job of maintaining old buildings.
I understand your point, though, Amanda. You know, how long do we continue to put money into old buildings? And honestly, our newest building, this one right here, is not young.
Right.
You know, eighty-four, that's-
I came here my first year in second grade.
So, yeah, it's, it's not even young, you know? So, we've definitely got some things facing us. And a new building would solve all those problems.
Right.
We got four scenarios to work on. Anything else?
Kitchens. Is there a scenario where we could put a kitchen someplace and transport food to the other locations? Cutting down the amount of equipment we have to have throughout our school district.
We talked about that once, didn't we?
Well, we moved some stuff, some kitchen equipment from one building to the other.
We talked about preparing meals in Lakeview, I believe, and moving them to Wall Lake. That might've been before he stopped.
So, you don't mean a one, the whole district, or maybe?
I think it would be one that prepares everything, but you would have to have warmers and some stuff to do a little bit of stuff at, at those, those outer branches, too.
You just wouldn't have to have all of the equipment.
Yeah, exactly.
Is it because we're needing new equipment? I mean, or is it a co-
I think eventually we're gonna have to have new equipment. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we need it now, but eventually.
But if we're gonna do something, then we need to think about it. We need to think about it now before we start to put money in the buildings.
Remodeling, you're doing something.
No, I don't, I don't think we're in terrible shape in kitchens, that I know of.
No, not at all.
But, I mean, I go eat with Jackson, and I get better, too, so.
That's real quick.
Yeah.
Stoltenberg says. What about, what about a scenario that says we don't have to build a brand-new building for K-12, but we, smaller building?
That would house what?
Well, I don't know that.
What about a, you know, this is something else.
Half, maybe.
What about a smaller building on one end of the district, and we have this on the other end, and then we do something with the building we have in the middle for the older kids, so that the little kids each have nice buildings on each end of the district? So, they can stay closer to home, and say that houses K through five.
So, you're really talking about K through five attached to a, or K through six? Why, you can fight about that later.
Right, give it away.
Sure.
So, you're really talking about a central location or, or a K through five pod connected to a six through twelve building?
Or say-
Or is it, did I not get that right?
Say, Wall Lake, is it, would it be better to, our elementary's here, why would we build a new elementary with this being in the shape that it is? How much would it cost to do a smaller building in Wall Lake? Get rid of the building you have, keep an elementary in Wall Lake, or wherever you guys see best fit? So that your little kids are here, and your little kids are here, and then in the middle are the bigger kids, say, seven through twelve. And we used to have K through six in this building, and say, K through six, you know what I mean? Put their, on the outer skirts, and the ones who drive them in the middle. You know, then we're not, I would think that we're not looking at forty million dollars, then.
Well, that's, that's what I was thinking, is maybe start somewhere. And, and, I mean, you have a really good thought. I was thinking more- I was thinking more, seven through twelve centrally located somewhere. And, you know, just start the process. Eventually, eventually, we're gonna have to.
Add-on, make it centrally located.
Eventually, we're gonna have to have a new building.
I think so, too.
Eventually. I don't know how long that is from now, but eventually, we have to do that.
I can give you some, some bit of information on, on what you're suggesting, 'cause, again, referring back to the numbers that we had when we approached the pebble a couple of years ago. The concept there was to take, at Wall Lake, is to take the old part of the building away, and then put back on just what you need, and leave the, the section where Mike's office is in the pre-kindergarten, and that, you were blaming the rest of the gym. And then add on a library, make it handicap accessible, and then add on just the classrooms that you needed. The estimated cost for that was between two and three million dollars to do that.
And including tearing down the disposal and all that?
That, it, it did, but that is always a, a floating figure.
How many, how many rooms was that, nine, six or nine?
I think it was, I think it was nine and a, I have to dig them up, but I think it was nine and then a, a new library, because that's currently in the old part of the building. That would become, that particular concept, it's just a drawing that the architect made, but that concept was that when you came in, then there would be a, the media center would be right there, and then you would have to add an elevator that would get to the second floor of where the third and fourth grade classrooms are. That part of the building stays, and where the cafeteria is, and the gym stays, and you just add it on the classrooms.
So what about the high school now, I'm somewhat as familiar with the building as what I could be? The high school now, would that even come close to working as an elementary school?
I would say no. You got more history there, John?
The, where our offices, that wing was an elementary. Since then, it's been remodeled with a science lab and a family-consumed science lab.
Very expensive areas.
Yeah, kind of, some of your more expensive classrooms, that would probably.
Not make sense to me.
Not make sense, and that's the ground level portion. At one time, that was a C-two, and then Mike built.
Because as you're saying, the whole, see, I was, I like your idea of putting something small, centrally located, and building off of that eventually. That's, I think, a great idea.
Well, I think we, that's.
No matter who we house there. We could decide who we would house there.
We, we can work some stuff there. And to give you an idea, what, again, going back to what was, was developed, these concept drawings in the pebble for the high school, what the, that concept was, is to take off the three-story, the old part, and replace that in phases. That particular concept had an auditorium going in where the small gym is at some point. And then putting on some classrooms out to the west, because there's room on that campus for this to happen. And the estimated cost there was probably, what, seven to ten million, depending on the auditorium.
The only problem was that, that I could see, though, is at, moving forward, is that it's, again, on one end of the district, just like being here would be on one end, you know, right?
No, this is at the high school, Lakeview.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Wall Lake.
No, no, this is the high school.
Okay.
And the high school is centrally located in the twenty-seventh. We can, we can pull those drawings out again. I, again, don't want anybody to interpret, that, those were never intended to be drawings for building, they're concepts that you can visualize.
So we do have quite a bit of land up to the, is it to the west?
Yes. If you look at where the, there's quite a bit of.
Practice field?
Yeah, there's quite a field, there's quite a bit of land, and then out behind the practice field, there's a piece, and then, then local farm rooms, the rest of it. There's quite a bit of space, there's quite a bit of space for growth at Lakeview, if that's what the board chooses to, to pursue.
How many rooms in the big, the old part, the three-story part, how many rooms are used as classrooms?
Third floor, there's two classrooms used. Second floor, there's one, two, three, four classrooms, and on the ground floor, one classroom.
Talking about.
Yes, you're talking high school, yes.
You're talking the towers part of the, the building, right?
The, I just call it the thir, the three-story part. And then you also have the kitchen in that wing.
What, when, when you talk to, to the designers earlier, what kind of timeframe do they, do they think you'd take to, to pull things down?
To be able to do that, if the decision was made. I don't know that we talked specifically, we brainstormed a little bit, Jay. To do what was, was the concept at, at, at Wall Lake Elementary, for instance, would, was probably a full, so you would have to have a plan in place for relocation.
Would we do modulars or something like that?
Would have to, have to figure something out, yes. There, and there's different models out there of what schools have done, ranging from using the gym for a year to lots of things. So that would be one thing. And then as far as the high school, the logic, what we had talked about is that you would build on the new part out to the west, and you could have school going on during that time. Then you would move into the new wing for the demolition of the old part. You really wouldn't, that can, that could be over one year, two years, whatever, but you're not displacing kids with that one. Uncomfortable working, yeah, there would, there'd be more noise and whatnot, but that's what the, the discussion was.
So ideally, you could, that would lead into, say, the elementary in Wall Lake, moving into that, and then, I mean, eventually, everybody, I mean, thought would be to, right?
It, it could be designed that way, or.
But it could just have a wing that's elementary, and elementary stays there, and high school's there, and then we keep a K through six here.
Anything's possible. We can play with that, and we can get you those old concept drawings, too, just to refresh your memories, to see, as a what-if. And again, I'm not advocating that.
No, but these are all just, I just faced some millions and millions going into places when we could be moving.
Forward.
Forward on something that we all know that we want eventually.
On the total cost, including, and, and again, relying on what we know at this point, which was the pebble vote, that also included between two and three million dollars for a gym added on to the middle school. And the total cost for all of it was going to be somewhere around seventeen million. So just to give you a ballpark of, of what you're talking about, to get you kind of thinking, you'd probably talk anywhere from twelve to fifteen million to do what you just were asking about.
Which would get us down to buildings, essentially.
Good. Well, actually, the scenario I just said was, was fixing up Wall Lake, you still have three, but the cost to build at that site, I would think, would be not any higher than remodeling at Wall Lake. I mean, you really got a couple of scenarios, if you wanna get to three, that's possible. If you wanna get to two, then you'd have to look at, at building an elementary wing that connects appropriately to where you can share, you can share the common areas, you know, the hardships and all of that, and you don't have to build a second kitchen. I mean, that's where the, the building cost goes down. We can play with that.
Good luck, John.
Yeah, when I said we.
So in, in getting these kind of set here officially, I am sort of, I mean, I'm assuming these have to be brought up in the meeting to be official. The value that we can officially come back with, you know, we can look forward and some other things.
I think, process I'm envisioning, I guess, in my sense, for each of these would be, I mean, I can do the operational stuff and get enrollments and figure transportation, that's tough stuff, but it's gonna involve a couple sets of meetings with each of the principals, because they're gonna have to tell me personnel-wise what, what it means. You know, and that's obviously a big part of it. So this won't be done before Kevin's done, that's.
Oh, come on.
We'll make progress, guaranteed.
I think one of the things that we need to say to that is, is, you know, we, we all wanna move forward with this, we all wanna keep it going, but we don't wanna make a rash decision.
Based on a nine or ten million dollar operating fund budget, we're around nineteen or twenty percent. The people that do this at the state level, and are far superior to anybody here regarding this, would recommend you be between fifteen and twenty percent. So we're in that target range. So if we would hold a public hearing tomorrow, to close a building because of money, we couldn't look them in the eye and say, yeah, we have to do that. So that's the other thing we have to consider. Are these good things to consider? Yes. Is this the time to do them? Well, not driven by finance, it's not. If it's driven by other things in our mission statement, then that's fine. Now, will I sit here in twelve months and say something different? Quite possibly, you know? The first two years in this district, we did spend five hundred thousand, and then they took in. So that unspent authority went from three million to two million. So that trend is there, that's, that's where all the concern came from. Now, the last twelve months would have been relatively stable, with things that we implemented this year. So that's good news.
I could piggyback just a little on that, I think John's spot on with, where we're at financially is about where we want to be. But we also have to be able to, to forecast, and just using the most obvious, in a little while, you're gonna, you're gonna approve ninety-seven graduates this year. I can guarantee you, we're not gonna have a class of ninety-seven come home next year. And so that isn't going to be hit until the two thousand sixteen, seventeen market, but you know that's coming, so you have to, you have to be sensitive to that. John, our, our reorganizational stuff ends this year or next year?
In store in this budget.
And, and so, you know, don't, you know, I'm not gonna be here, but I would hate to see you get, as a district and as a board, get to a financial cliff to where then it really is a, so balancing what John was saying, he's spot on, but I think you gotta keep the process going. We know, we absolutely know that you're gonna be faced with some tough financial decisions in the next two or four years, we've been saying that for a while now, and we're really not kidding.
So, to put it in layman's terms, you guys did a great job, but what I would say is that we have to make a decision, but we don't have to do it within the next month or even two months.
No.
There has to be a decision made, but not right away.
I think the process that we're going through is fine, and to look at these scenarios is fine. But I also think to tell your public you're gonna do one of these right away isn't fine. The public's not ready for it, the finances don't say we have to do it. There will come a time when the two merge. There will come a time when the finances say do it, the public realizes we have to do it, and we'll be ready to do it.
And we'll be prepared for it.
Because we've done this work.
Well, well said.
That's, that's what I think.
Well said.
That is very well said, and I think that'll be obvious. So you, John?
Because it's gonna take a lot of time to get there. I mean, you know what I mean? It's gonna take a lot of time for us to.
I would say at best, depending on what the scenario is, if, if, even when a decision is made at some time in the future by this, by this board, you're looking at least at a year, probably two, before anything will actually be ready to, to make that change. So, again, I, I guess I applaud your thought in, in continuing the process. I think you need to do that, because you need to be very deliberate about it. That's really what John's talking about, and I really don't like to admit it, but I think he's right.
And that's all, you know, those, I just wanna know that we're always moving forward with things if I ever sound like it's anything for any other reason, I just, it makes me feel good to know that we're, I don't ever wanna be at a, everything's okay, let's just.
No, and I don't think any of us do. I don't think anybody.
As long as we're working towards that.
And we don't wanna get that point in the unspent balance where we're at a half a million, and we haven't done this.
Yep.
What's projected enrollment next year coming in?
About twenty less, I think. How many five-year-olds, Mike, seventy? How many five-year-olds next year? Seventy-two?
Five-year-olds that were not counted as full, fully funded this year?
Yeah, new five-year-olds.
New five-year-olds, that would be a preschool students, right? I think we're in the sixties.
Sixties, some reason I had seven in my mind.
Somewhere between twenty to thirty drop is gonna be realistic. Again, there's no way to project move-ins, move-outs, those types of things.
No, it's happened on the last day.
Yeah. And that, and that happens every year, you know? I think over the past several years, we've actually gained in movements, but I do forecast that.
So I would say, I guess, to, to keep us moving forward is, right now, do we have any other scenarios that we need to look at? And if John would, I'd let him go through zero through five.
Zero's new building, and it's not gonna do much work on that right away. First one I heard was move the Wall Lake students to SAC Elementary.
Which would require an addition, correct?
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay, but it's just right now a.
That will be in our discussion with the prep schools, so. The second scenario I heard was move the middle school students to the high school. The third scenario was have a pre-K six at Wall Lake at this site, and have a seven, twelve high school in Lakeview.
And I guess, just, it doesn't matter to me whether it's, whether it's, it's five or six, whatever, whatever's best for kids. I definitely know the fifth graders are not ready to be with high school kids.
It's hard having them with eighth graders some days.
The fourth one was just kind of a blanket statement, two buildings. The fifth one, I wasn't real clear on, but it was some type of a, some type of a beginning in the process of, of getting to a facility in Lakeview that would house at least seven of all.
Kind of almost holds into the two buildings.
Yeah, I think so, too. I mean, when we're talking about that kind of, that size of an addition going on.
We'll probably go with the first four for now, to get back to, because they're pretty, they're cut.
Yep.
They're pretty concrete. As a matter of fact, I'm just gonna cross the fifth one off for now, and if we get those four done and not more, we won't.
I really think that the building will be encompassed in there, John, so you're in good shape. Does any, does anybody have any additional requests?
I would say then that we could close our work session. And we can't start our public hearing until six o'clock, so if you guys need to, we can take a break.